You need to hide a project going while I dust up the tendons in there and then you need to sleep with your feet out.
What?
Not dip your feet down because a lot of people sleep with their feet dipped and it slacks the tendons. You need to sleep with your toes.
All I know is it's specifically painful. My, I'm like, I'm gonna get it now. Maybe it will. I've never gone in a car affect.
Yeah, my sister.
All right, um, February fourteenth, that'd be Valentine's Day, everybody. Here for county court work session to discuss county contracts. And um, just uh, trying to get uh, a read on what we have out there. We have a partial list. I'm sure it'll grow for some, but uh, I've added. This was started several months ago and I've added a few things that I know we have. Um, but I don't have a whole lot of other information about them. So that is the worksheet that I gave you. But I basically at this point know that we have. That's a long time ago.
I hate having to do this, but it just, then I can release these, so do it.
Solutions yes, whatever it's called.
And can we kind of note like what the. Solutions yes and. Lawian leasing. Generally, I've always heard kind of updates from the clerk's office on those. Did they tend to. Handle quite a bit of that or is that more the admin or do you guys kind of just all work together on?
Um, it's last year budget time, the different sheets with the budgets come across my desk. Um, it was all, you know, all those contracts were done before I took office.
Uh huh.
Um, as far as coordinating directly with them, I haven't done any coordination with the, with the entities themselves.
I always kind of thought Dad did some of that for us. Is that your recollection, Daddy? I remember him.
Speaking about those, but I have no idea whether the judge or the. Court handled those. You asked.
Yeah, I think it maybe it was a little bit of a team effort, but I think generally. I remember Dad giving a lot of input about. Different things that they were, weren't providing and things needed to change. Before.
I have.
So the M I C I S. So I have a contract.
Um.
You have some sort.
Yeah, probably.
I'm just thinking of the things as they.
Yeah.
Off in my head.
I mean, do you have this document where you could add to it in real time at all or? Uh. Do you just want to make a copy and then go in and add it?
It's on my own computer.
Okay.
This is, yeah, this one I don't have access to, to Pammy's files and my files on it. This is a, this is a laptop that wasn't being used and I just grabbed it for presentations.
Oh, okay.
Because the last time I used my computer in here, it was tied up for half a day and I couldn't.
Wasn't on the recording.
Yeah, it was, it was for the Motorola presentation and. So instead of tying mine up, I kind of let it use for Zoom. Um, so here's the solutions yes, which is the top years.
It looks like, you know, most of those aren't till twenty twenty five or six. Some of those. Most of them look like they're a five-year contract on some. Do you have any contracts on my wave?
We have a rental contract.
Oh, yeah, those kind of building, building lease contracts.
Um, and here. The farm site. Facility.
I don't see the temp agency on here. That's one that I had on my list. The cleaning services and then.
It's on there. Triple R janitorial.
Oh, sorry. It's that one.
Oh, um, our, maybe it's on the one that our I T.
I T's in there.
That's Tyler.
Smith, A I S.
Oh, A I S, yeah, okay, that's it. No, I didn't realize that. I didn't recognize it.
And then the Tyler system. How is that usually documented? Is that documented as Tyler information system or something?
Yeah, I don't know. I'll have to research all those. I mean, when you sit down and try and think all of them.
Well, that's like, that's really interesting, you know, like, because I have no idea what the terms are with each other. You know what, uh, any of that looks like in the document.
So the MyWave one. Looks like it expires March seventeenth of twenty twenty-five.
Okay. How much is, do they pay?
Uh, I don't know. Say. It looks like from this lease amendment. Number one. That commenced in twenty twenty. Archive and warm site facility that says rent, the rent for the premises shall be zero dollars.
Well, that was, that's messed up. That can't be, that can't be said. Wait, that was how it was when, in two thousand seventeen, when I first heard that it was basically for free. And Mark Owens and I both said, that's not cool. That's not, yeah.
I wonder how you figured that.
Some of the rate. And he said he was going to change that, et cetera. Now, is that something that was signed by the whole county court or just the judge?
Um. Oh, you know what? This, this is between us. I, excuse me, this is between us and the state.
Oh.
Between us and the state. This one is. This is not between us and MyWave. This is, because, because we don't own, we don't own the.
Yeah, it's a weird, very much situation.
It was basically given to us to use for economic development.
Government, government, but then whatever, whatever.
I'll have to find that.
MyWave, yeah. We don't, um. We do in kind, uh, or we donate. The recycling and the other building over, well, we get rental from, we used to get rental from, from Outlaw Wood Products. Um. And that one, is that available for rent?
Well, it, it's still occupied right now. Um, I figured with this discussion, make it. Probably can't make any decisions in here, but.
No, we can get it onto an agenda.
Yeah, that, that, um, that the taxes have not been paid for this year. We're gonna end up paying the taxes and they've been reminded. Three or four times that they need to pay taxes. They have been paying their rent, which the rent is only. I want to say three fifty a month. It's pretty, pretty low.
That was only a hundred.
Huh?
I thought you told them the other day three hundred.
No, my bad. I, I'll have to double check. Somewhere around there, but it's pretty low.
Then as we saw, we were picking up the water bill for it on top of that, which was sizable. It's bad business.
Yeah. Well, it's all, the, the motivation behind it was all economic development for it on. Start-up business, I think, yeah. So, um, but.
So you gotta value it.
The taxes haven't been paid for this year. Um, I talked to with the treasurer the other day and we just said, the county's gonna have to pay it. Um, and it was preliminarily discussed potentially to cancel that contract, so we need an official decision on that. And then, uh, we'll serve him and let him know that.
Can you give, uh, Della or whoever a call?
Excuse me?
Can you give Della or whoever?
Yeah, I've got her number in there.
Just so she'll, if she knows coming.
Yeah.
Or if she has anything to say.
Once we make a decision at a meeting, then he can know by.
I'll let her know that we're discussing it, just so she hears about it through.
Yeah, I think that'd be.
The rumor network, whatever.
Yeah.
Um, so I'll, I'll do that. Um, and they have quite a bit of stuff there that has been migrated in and around the building. Um. At this point right now, I mean, I'm gonna be myself, pretty willing to work with them and give them enough time to get things cleaned up. So probably a sixty-day. Notice or something like that. Um, I think the contract itself is probably requires a thirty-day notice, but, you know, just, just to. Give them the ability to get everything cleaned up, moved out. Um, and then. I have some ideas for that facility for county use that we can. Discuss now or later or whatever.
If you have ideas right now regarding it, I think now's fine.
I, I would like to. And last year, um, they were several months, six months or so behind in rent. And my idea, if they didn't, if they didn't get caught up and we ended up taking the facility back, my idea was to move. And I talked to the weed department about moving the weed department in there. Uh, right now they're paying like a thousand dollars a month for a facility to store their chemicals and everything in. And, um, a lot of that is reimbursable. I know from the B L M, it's not really, it doesn't really hit our general fund or the road department because of the way it's reimbursed. But still, I just figured if, if we have that facility, we can move the entire weed department in there.
Well, the concern might be the security of it. It's not fenced in, et cetera, like currently is and it is toxic chemicals, you know, to some extent.
Yeah, follow up on that and make sure that if in the Bay area, if in the warehouse area, because one thing that's nice about the.
And, and just, you know, shenanigans.
Yeah. Well, one thing that's nice about that facility is it has an office space and it has a break room space and a bathroom. And if the chemicals are.
Right now, we don't have a bathroom in there. Weed.
Yeah, they go off to the road department, I believe. I haven't actually been inside their office.
Yeah, so if, if there's no conflict with the chemicals being stored out in the Bay area of the, of the building. And there's plenty of room to park their side-by-sides and A T Vs and everything else indoors, then that takes care of the security part of things. Um, so it's just, it's just an idea at this point. We need more, a little bit more, um, investigation.
Well, and, um, I know the sheriff mentioned to me a while back that the outlawed products building was being broken into frequently, but they'd also never done anything to. Improve the security on the doors. And so there's things we can do, just like the fairgrounds had to do. To keep people from breaking and entering and those measures just haven't been taken out there. And so there's. Some very plausible things that can be put into place to make it more secure, but just haven't been. But would we.
Well, that's an idea that I, that I have produced, so.
It sounds like.
You know, unless we want to stick with the continued economic development purpose for it and offer it up to somebody else. You know, a low rent or whatever. I, whatever we want to do.
Yeah, so let's talk about it and continue to talk about it. Think about it, um, regarding the, um. Archive center where MyWave is renting, um, should our broad, broadband work. Ever hopefully, uh, result in some, you know, real funding that would. Happen across the county, you know, that space. Last time I went into it, there's plenty of room for another. Entity or two that they needed to for the office space and to store their. Stuff in there, but I haven't been in there probably for six months, but, um.
There's, there's, there's more than enough room in there for another.
Yeah.
For another occupant.
I would, I would say as long as our, we believe the rent is at the right rate, et cetera, when. And if a contract, subcontract comes up for a renewal, um, just kind of keep that in mind. I don't know that, that will ever be needed, but. It's the ideal place. Even though it's all weapon burns, you know, it, it, they've got, they've got the park and they got storage. They've got.
Well, and that's where the, that's where the digital lines come into.
Right.
They come right into there. So if there's a purpose to be able to tap in close into the digital or the, the, uh. Digital, uh.
Fiber that comes in, because the fiber comes out of there.
Fiber, fiber optic, that's what I'm saying.
And if there's anything that they, if it's state-owned, then if there aren't any repairs and things, then I. I'm presuming maybe the state would repair its own building.
Well, right now the agreement, I'll read through that, but after talking with MyWave, the agreement with them is they, they do any repairs.
Oh, is that right? Okay.
Right.
But I'll find those, I'll find those contracts, those agreements and everything and, um, make them available to you. And anything we identify here that we need research, I'll try and research more of. I've got some of them here, but it's, um. It's a research project in Laserfish.
Right, right. Do we have any contracts at all that relate to our land bills?
No, because they're all, they're all county-owned properties and, and we do have, uh. Their license through D E Q and they're up for renewal on their licenses this year.
Okay. Just trying to think of cats and dogs and things.
What kind of durations of those usually?
Ten-year.
Okay, that's good. Unless it's not annual.
Okay. No, that was the last week, two thousand fourteen to twenty twenty-four.
Okay. Okay, other things on my list.
Audit, the auditors.
Oh.
Is that a contract?
It would be a contract. Health insurance rates. I know I'm talking to a lot of employees, um. Due to our very high deductibles that our health insurance really is not an attractive benefit in this county. And, um, that's one of the, the things you see in other entities when we're losing. Employees to the state and other agencies due to our health insurance plan not being. A reasonable deductible. And so I'd like to. See if we can spend some time seeing what else is available in the market or thinking of ways, I know with like the. The charter school, um, a lot of our employees take it unless their spouse has better benefits, but we also in conversations with our legal counsel. You know, when you offer someone a job, you're offering them the benefits too. And so to not compensate them for any of the. Benefits. Because they're choosing not to take it, they said, uh, no, they. There's some potential there for, you're not fully compensating that person because the benefits aren't being, and so we've actually made a stipend to those that don't. Take health insurance. That's like half the amount of what the insurance would be. And so it allows them to spend it towards their own health insurance. In an H S A, you know, deal. And so I think there's other ways we can really how we're handling the health insurance that. As, you know, we've talked in general. Our employees are what make this go now. And the more we have employee turnover, the harder it is to keep stable things happening. And so if we can do anything to make us, uh, a little more competitive with our health insurance.
Definitely need to have whoever the savvy person is to shop, shop around and get. And it takes time. It takes a lot of time to do that, but, you know.
But there are people in the health insurance industry that do handle these kind of things, that do the shopping for you and come back with codes from different, you know.
Yeah, I, I think with us using C I S as our, as our insurer. We're gonna be limited to what they, packages they have.
But is that something that gets split off from what they offer us and go after us?
We don't want to be held hostage.
Yeah.
But they may, yeah, I mean, they're a fact, they're a factor in that. But I know. A lot of commissioners tell me the only reason. They're part of A O C is for the C I S insurance for their.
For relief. Yeah, because we have a lot of them from.
Yeah, they're, that's the main reason. Point Association of Oregon Counties is, you know, from that membership. Yeah. So I don't know. I have no idea how good or bad it is. Again, I'm one of those people that doesn't take it, doesn't get compensated enough. Because I don't take it either, but you know.
What do you use instead of?
Medicare. I'm old enough.
Okay.
And before that, I just used them. What I did, oh, I'm at Fitz. He didn't take insurance.
He's cash. Um, and I don't take it, um, because I got my insurance with my retirement.
Do you take it?
I do.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a lot of, like I say, a lot of employees, when we talk about health insurance, what I'm satisfied with.
I remember when I moved here.
Susan, feel free to chime in. You look like you, uh.
When I used to use your period.
Yeah, no, he did.
For six months, I, I handled that stuff. It's for district three back in like two thousand twelve, thirteen, whatever. Um, I was shocked because I was still, we COBRA, meaning you carry it with you. From back in two thousand two, when we moved here, we carried what my husband's was from Metropolitan, watching an airport's authority. And that was such a better plan. We were able to keep it. Um, that's what I had until I turned older. That's, I knew I had something else. I couldn't remember. Um, and when I saw what people's had to pay and what their deductibles were, because I was sort of in personnel mode at home. I felt so bad. And I thought, this is crazy.
It's not.
So if we get away from a high deductible plan though, then the H S A will go away. Because H S A's, and that might be funds that we could use for.
It could actually be a benefit to the employee in the long range, um, because the H S A doesn't even cover a fraction of our, um. Deductible. And then if you have, you know, more than one portion of a plan, it's thirty-four hundred dollars per person, sixty-eight hundred dollars per family. The H S A isn't really a benefit when your deductible's on.
I'm just saying that that would go away, but those are funds that we could use.
In a different way to try to navigate that.
So I'll, I'll, I'll have H R look at and talk with C I S. Actually, we're going to. The C I S annual conference the end of the month.
Oh, good.
In Salem. Um, so I'll look and, look, listen and ask questions about that topic and.
And if there are other counties that feel the same way.
First or something like that.
You know, if there are other counties that feel the same way, why can't we be bundled with them?
Well, and that's, that's kind of an interesting question because C I S is supposed to be.
Working in that realm for us.
The purchasing power of having all the cities and counties and everybody underneath that. So again, those are questions that all, that all.
Like the state, and that's what they're doing for insurance packages and they, they have computers at every corner. And, and really, for what. It's why people get, get started at the county, but then they jump ship and go somewhere else because the benefit is so much greater. And so with C I S's bargaining power, you can think that they could figure out how to be competitive with the state and federal packages. Because right now, it just isn't any of those. I mean, it's no different than just the layman going out for insurance right now is all we're getting.
Yep. Let's look into that.
All right. So I will, we'll start to look into it. Like I said, I'll be at that conference end of the month, so I'll do research there as well.
Uh, our A J S contract? You already got that, right?
It's coming up. In fact, I talked to, um, Adam Kemper last night at the Wolf meeting. He said Shane's currently working on that. We'll have that ready for us soon to review. And so that I see coming up maybe by March, July. Potentially, and, you know.
Anyway, I mean, that's a lot of money. They're, and I don't.
The overhead that they.
Well, yeah, I mean, we get invoices of six and seven thousand dollars a month, basically divert it all up. Um, I talked with the U S D A, um, representatives at the A O C conference. And a portion of the, a portion of the contract is state funds and a portion of it is county funds. And they burn off the state funds first because it's a smaller amount and then the remainder of the year they, they bill.
At the higher amounts, I think it's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It, um. I don't know. It just seems.
I just remember the first time. The first time it was presented to us before you both were on court. I mean, their admin fee was like twenty-six percent.
Yeah.
I was like.
You're dealing with the.
Oh my gosh.
That's just. What we did is the actual credit control on the ground in a county this size. And you get someone actually perform those duties. And so it.
I mean.
They actually, we, we need to workload here of what they're doing. They're. They're out there earning it. Like, we don't have a guy sitting there that's twiddling his thumbs out of death.
And I, I, in no way was implying that.
No, I'm just saying that it's, it's, uh, it's an expense, but I do feel that.
It's a priority, a priority role that needs to be done right. And it's being done right is just, yeah, I agree, but.
Yeah, now whenever you have, and you know, it's one of those situations too. If we ever get to a point which I, you know, this is maybe just wishing, uh, that we wouldn't need, um. The bird control piece. We could look at it as a different.
Exactly.
Contract potentially, but it's those licensing that comes with certain chemicals to deal with certain predators. That is only available for that. And that's why we're.
Anopole.
No, because they will only license their own people with it and won't license other parties' things.
I know. I am aware of that.
How to be an opalize. Be nice and mechanics, can everybody figure out how to.
They have to live here to provide those services. All right.
Um, is executive part of the Tyler system package or is it separate as a contract?
I think it's part of the Tyler. Well, I don't know. I'll have to double check on that. Um, I think Tyler created executive time for it because they didn't have a. A time keeping module. Um. Let me ask. I've asked a question before, but I don't remember exactly what the answer was.
And I think that he's on cue with that, but, um, I know there's other systems out there that are. From what I heard from other entities. This is good, if not better. And I'm sure they're not doing this cheap for us.
Long time ago, but nineteen ninety-one, in nineteen ninety-one, when I worked at Booz Allen Hamilton in. Rising's Corner, Virginia, you know, high speed, but still. We had to do time sheets. It was almost like.
Yeah, we had to just a minute.
We had to defend the contracts and we had to, you know, weekly, we did so that it wasn't like you could later, but anyway, you did it as you went. You know, I'm sure. And that was a long time ago and it just went seamlessly and I'm sure, I'm sure you keep up with the better systems over time.
Well, there's some that are a little better format even for like a device where you go in and, you know. A little more streamlined on a daily basis, you know, for the.
But it's, you know, part of it, it is part of Tyler, but it's a separate contract. She, she'll be in a second. She's actually on the phone with Tyler right now because we're trying to work on some budget reports and.
Do, do we, we don't have any contract or even any unwritten agreement as far as you know? With the way station, is that correct? That the state owns way station?
Um, not that I'm aware of. I haven't heard of any, haven't seen any.
Because back, um, in the last administration, at one point, I remember we were told that. Nope, they said here, Terrell Dominic, he said, you guys got it. But whether that was just a handshake or, or formal.
There should be some kind of an I G A or something on it.
I mean, I don't know that we. I don't even know if we want to have that, but I just. If there is such a contract or an M O U, oh, I guess, so we're doing contracts, but are you also talking M O U's or?
No, for this meeting, but we do need to probably visit it just so that we do have.
Another spreadsheet.
You know, spreadsheet for that.
I G As, M O U's.
So the Greater Eastern Oregon Development Corps slash. C O V A, you know, the broadband stuff. That was just a contract. Well, I just wrote it down. It's a.
And is that G D O D C or?
Yeah, it was a contract with G E O D C. There's a contractor's rural prosperity partners. They changed their name.
But you thought that the funds that you applied from the grant would then cover for the next duration?
Um, it will be different, different. We would, the work would advance and, and MyWave was a co-applicant for a portion of it because. The I S P's gotta start designing stuff and we still have time to include. All those networks chartering any of the others that we hope that at least some will come forward for pieces, um. We went for everything we could get. It should cover us for another year for the C O V A services and. Planning feasibility study and actually in an initial draft. Design, that's too, too specific a term.
Yeah, we want to have something to say. This is, this is what we're talking about. Our portion is covered with the.
Yeah, we don't have to do match this year. MyWave is doing some match. Into it, but it will, if we, we are awarded. Or something. Um, they. Or something, they, it, it comes, I'm on behalf of Lauren Campbell's the applicant for it, just so you know. They sent an email yesterday that said, I think it went to all the applicants, and it said, we are reviewing to see if any applications experience technical glitches and have missing attachments or anything else, we will let you know by close of business on the fifteenth tomorrow. Whether it, you might be in that situation, this is not an opportunity to tweak or change, but if something is missing and you actually thought you uploaded it and didn't, so. Remember I told you I had a little trepidation when I got submitted, I was like.
Kind of loading at the same time, we give the loaner system a bit.
Yeah, so I haven't heard from them yet, and, and I did, you know, let the contractors know that we'll be working with them favorably.
Another contract that I just thought of, in, in addition with MyWave, is Ellis Network, that's who we actually get our, our internet service through, is Ellis, Ellis Network, whatever.
I'm still on with them, but I told you to give me just a minute.
Okay, so the question was asked about executive time, and you answered that, I let him know, it's actually a separate contract, but it's through, through Tyler?
It is through Tyler, and we have one charge for it, which was like twenty-five hundred dollars, and then they don't have any maintenance fees on it. The only thing that I've seen that they have, that there is no annual maintenance fee.
There's no rate for a cost file.
It's a one-time.
Do you feel like, from your end, it goes smoothly, or, or do you know there's better systems out there?
I don't know whether there's better systems out there, I don't, I've worked through bugs, so it's working, I don't know that it's the best thing, we put a lot of, you know, a lot of, oh, I'm sorry, I told you absolutely wrong, I was thinking portal, I apologize, I was thinking portal. Execution, they do have a humongous fee every year that we have to pay, I apologize, my, my bad, I was thinking.
Portal had an initial.
Twenty-five hundred and no annual fees, oh, no, my, I'm sorry.
Which both of those are through Tyler as well, right?
Yeah.
But if we had a portal, ever be something that should, should, I'm not saying we're gonna, should we ever want to have a different time sheet, or time recording thing, that it could.
I talked about studs.
Talking about whatever interfaces between executive time and the portal.
Well, between executive time and Tyler software itself, because does, when somebody goes in and puts their time in an executive time, does that then transfer over to budget for payroll?
Yes.
So whatever system we went through, we have, want to have something that would interface with Tyler for the transfer of the, of that data? Or you end up having to have one standalone timekeeping application, and then you have to key in.
Well, I mean, that's why we went to something else, because it was taking me about eight hours to plug everything in, because it's not just, uh, somebody has a salary. You know, like these guys over here, they have a salary, and they have SD, and they have holiday work, and they have holiday not work, and they have overtime, and they, you know, maybe they have some extra hours that they have, so they could have six or seven, same thing with home health hospice, they have, you know, they break their stuff out between home health and hospice, and call out and this and that, and they could have ten things on one time sheet. So, yeah, it was taking me approximately eight hours to literally hand punch everything in, so this I can just import in, and then I double check it, obviously, twice, it's. So, it's, at least I'm not hand punching everything in.
So if we went with another, another timekeeping software.
Yeah.
We'd wanna, we'd wanna make sure that we had something that would interface with Tyler.
So as far as executive time's additional cost, with the other packages that Tyler has presented, did they have something like executive time in any of their cloud-based stuff that they presented, or it would still be a standalone, or how would it interface with the cloud-based versus our current version?
Uh, I want to research that, I don't recall.
You know, and that way, you know, we're looking at trying to get a cloud-based with different.
Deanna didn't go to them, to that seminar.
Oh, that's right, okay, sorry.
No, um, ten, I mean, obviously will interface with executive time, I don't know what it looks like.
They had any features, you know, that they developed with the cloud base that was similar to the executive time, only, not executive time, because it was developed separately with the version of it.
Because it's all online, that, you know, executive time's on, on my thing, so it has its own link that people go into, that's how they access their time sheets. Not through Tyler, they don't call it the Tyler, they go to.
Tyler's on our server.
Yes.
But not on the cloud.
Yeah. Executive time is wherever it is, it's not, it's not.
It's a web-based, Tyler, or executive time is a web-based application.
More so my cloud.
Yes, okay, yeah.
Just things to kind of like think of as we're looking at making some changes, and what they're charging for executive time versus what the additional charges for the cloud-based system, and if there would be any negotiation.
Yeah, we have a lot, there's a lot of fees that they're charging us.
We don't know the exact cost for executive time.
I could find that, yeah, I could look it up and see if annual fees.
So I can.
In the annual.
Yeah, it's like May, June-ish every year, so when you look at my budget, there's, there's in that one contract line, there's a lot of money in there, but by the end of June, there won't be, because all that, all that stuff gets billed out of there, and like I said, it's in May, June-ish.
So we can build out this, for now, all these different aspects, and then I'll go in, have Deanna, myself, maybe Holly, started by then, and go through and research these, and dates, and amounts, and everything, and then have it for the next week, if you can.
Yeah.
Real quick, insurance, health insurance.
Okay.
We always come back to the question of CIS, they have so many different municipalities and counties and everything, so they should have decent buying power.
I would think so.
But, but, yeah, we're, we're relegated to a high deductible type of account.
No, we can go to, we can go to a COPA plans, they have like three or four COPA plans, but they're more expensive, and this is the best value of the, they probably have, they have four or five HSA plans, and four or five COPA plans, but this is the best value that we're getting, when you look at the whole deck sheet and everything.
So the COPA ones are gonna cost us more, gonna cost the employer more?
And the employee, you know, because.
Better, maybe better deductibles, because they're.
They're better deductibles, but.
Really high with these current ones.
Right, so if we go to a COPA plan, you have to know that HSA goes away, because we cannot, we cannot contribute, nor can they contribute to an HSA account unless they have an HSA plan. It's not possible, it's a federal.
The other type is an FSA.
The other type is FSA, and then you have to use that by the end of the year, certainly, five hundred dollars will roll over, something, because they changed that rule, excuse me, nothing would roll over, but now they.
So if it, if it gets put in and not used, does it go back to the employer, or where does it go?
Disappears. It goes to the slam.
Yeah, a lot of them, if you don't use it, it's gone.
They absorb it?
Yes, yes, yes. Frankly, a pain in the butt, because you, you know, when, those used to have an HSA or FSA, and so, you know, you could obviously go to the eye doctor, you could go to the dentist, you go to the doctor, all those things are, can be accounted for. Then you could also use it for toothpaste, it's a contact solution.
Over the counter.
Over the counter, that kind of stuff, medications, that kind of stuff, well, then they started taking off no more solutions, no more dental, or, you know, toothpaste, no more, nothing, so it's down to almost the basics, vision, dental care.
Depends, depends on the provider, they're different, the one I had with the federal government was quite a bit, there was quite a bit on the list.
And started dwindling it down.
Right now, we have one through the state with, with my wife, and it's not bad, it's not as much stuff as what I had when I was on the federal, federal one, but they are, it, it's gonna depend on the provider and the program.
Yeah, and it need to be cheaper to go through COPA and, you know, drop the HSA, and.
Have a better deductible.
And have a better, look, they are lower, but like I said, they're quite a bit more expensive, so we'll find that out here at the end of the month.
Yeah, that's what I thought we were gonna go.
Yeah, that's what he said, that you get to have the opportunity to research some of that.
So with CIS, are we restricted to what they offer, or, or can we split out the healthcare part of it and go somewhere else?
We can, yeah.
And still have CIS as our property insurer?
Yes. Yes, we can do that.
Trying to figure out. Have you, have you ever, uh, in the past, been asked to and actually shopped around on health insurance yourself, and if so, how did you, what was your process, or was there anyone to contact, help you with that, or?
There's usually agents that are.
Exactly, Jeremy would probably be the one that we would need to, to, well, he could probably provide us with that information.
Jeremy.
Jeremy Evers through our insurance, he could probably find us a, a plan that would be.
Something that we could look at for comparison.
He could give us a couple to look.
Probably, because like John Day does Moda, I believe, for their health insurance.
I heard some things about Moda that are.
They are with CIS, or the rest of the stuff, but.
Moda's OHA and their.
It is a lot of services and stuff, when you drop all that stuff too.
I had, in a conversation at symmetry board meeting recently, I heard some things related to Moda that. Wouldn't you?
Would be pause, would be pause.
Pacific Source, there are others, quite a bit of other.
Yeah.
Plans out there, and like I said, Jeremy would probably be the best person to do that, because he's gonna.
It's what he does.
That's, exactly, exactly.
So, um, oh, just off the top of your head, we're trying to build a list of contracts, just to research and get on top of them, and renew the ones that need to be renewed and all that. So we have, and I'm gonna name off of you, just if you can think of anything that we're not thinking of, so we have, it's not Steen's Mountain Insurance anymore, it's, uh, what are they called?
Good, um, Jeremy.
Yeah, we'll, we'll fill that one in.
Yeah.
Symmetry Care, Behavioral Health, we have a contract with them, with them basically as the county, county's healthcare provider, right?
For mental health and addictions.
Uh, Western States Cap, that's road department, Solutions, yes, is the copiers. Quadient Leasing, postage meter, the postage machine. The Elevator Schindler, maintenance for the elevators, Design Journey for our website, Gregory Smith Economic Development, AIS for IT, Dominic Corolla for legal counsel, Triple R for janitorial, Dr. Liose is our health, four different hats, and then Health Director, Medical.
Medical.
Medical, yeah. Um, and all those, USDA Predator Control, and then we have some other, because we're just trying to create this list, so we got CIS, and MyWave, LS Networks, the internet.
Do we still have Century Link? Yeah, some of the.
We do, we have a few, we do have a few accounts with them, still a few lines, but it's not really a contract, that's just a.
Yeah, it's not contractual, and gets in voice, like, goes to IP, so. It's not a formal contract.
I had been in the beginning, but I don't know, but that was before I came here, so I have no idea.
I, um, I'll speak to that one here in just a second, Temp Agency, Tyler, the auditors, GEO DC, and Executive Time, which is kind of part of Tyler, we'll get, we'll get dollar amounts and.
Yeah, we do have those.
Yeah, so is there any other contracts that you can think of that we?
I just thought of one, I don't know, but still, uh, vector control, do we have a contract?
Yes, we do, yes.
Think about that, I can't think of anything else.
Okay, we can add it, as you come across anything that we should add to it, right now, we're just trying to.
EFS services and nine.
I was just gonna say, or, um, what about search and rescue, or something like that, I don't know what, whether that's just is what it is, or?
I don't know.
It falls under the sheriff, search and rescue falls under the sheriff's authority. Any of our thing that we pay, like for nine-one-one, is through a MOU with the cities and the nine-one-one itself, so it'll kind of be another list, that MOU IGA list, I won't know that one next.
Is there any contract still open or regarding any of the proposed jail justice center stuff? Is there any, anyone on contract?
No, all the work that's been done has been paid for, like with Strollo, they did some, some architectural work through Strollo.
Okay, what about the surveyor, is he under a contract or anything?
Well, I need, I, I run across that the other day, and I, I run across a resolution.
I think we were looking for a contractor along the walk, to provide that with eleven, killing.
The key to allow is the surveyor, and I've got a resolution, I come across a resolution in the archive, that basically says, I need to check with Dominic and make sure it's current, I got it. Resolution twenty twenty-one, twenty-six. Arne County Court pushes to adopt procedure relating to direct appointment of contracts for the services of architects, engineers, and land surveyors. So this, this, uh, resolution deals with the surveyor, and it basically direct, so we can go directly, we don't have to do the whole.
Contract.
Yeah, RFP and everything. And it's professional services, when you, there's a whole chapter of basically professional type services in statutes for procurement.
Could you think of anything else? I don't know if it's on my head at all, think about it. This is like a risk on my head starting to.
Yeah, I know we'll add a few to it, as they kind of pop up and, and whatnot, but I think this is most of what I can think of.
Then that's good, yeah, and once they're on, on the spreadsheet, you know, it can.
Thank you, Deanna.
Search it by, you know, renewal date, and get a couple months ahead of it, you know? For our discussions and thoughts, and then actually either resigning with the provider, or going out for a new.
So our procurement policy is up for review right now, by statute, they changed some of the limits on intermediate procurement and whatnot, so county council had contacted me and said, this is a good time, actually, and in the process with the Fair Board and their processes and everything, that, that there's some things that needed to be updated, and I think the whole, uh, build, build, design needs to be added to our procurement policy, so they said it would be a good time, just because of the statutory limitation, limits changing everything, it would be a good time to review and renew the whole, revise, whatever, the whole procurement policy.
Did Audrey have a date when she had that?
She did, I.
Okay, she talked to me about it as well, and I said, yes, let's please get that updated, so we can get it impacted.
And I said the same thing, I provided, I cannot find a Word copy of our procurement policy, to have something to work on, instead of having to retype from scratch, I cannot find it.
That may have some application in the future for the broadband work as well, you know, want to oversee enough of the different entities that may end up providing them.
So you can find it in a Word document.
And if it's an original PDF document, then you can convert to open it up to edit, but, but a lot of the stuff we have is copies of copies. PDF copies of PDF copies, and you can't get into them, they're not, sometimes you can't, but, yeah, sometimes, but. So what we did have, though, I found, was a, a procurement policy from, um, the RHC, from the Health Clinic and Health Department, and it's pretty much a little different format, but it's pretty much the same stuff as what's in our actual procurement policy, uh, so I gave that to them, which I did have in a Word document, so I gave that to them, and said, this might be someplace to start with, so we don't at least have to type everything from scratch, so they do have that. And I'll, I'll check with Audrey and see where they're at with this.
Well, they should have some come up, that, some of the other counties, they also work, that would be easy to adapt, um, to fit our needs for. Because I, I know that that was something Wendy ran into, when she started asking for some of this, as we were getting these grant stuff, and she got a lot of blank stares. You know, it made her job ten times harder, because she was asking for things that nobody knew where it is.
So in that policy, and I'm fine with it, however the court wants to do, however we want to do review and everything, a lot of the stuff for the, for the basic procurement and intermediate purchases is put on the judge for, for approval, you know, if you want to stick with that, or anything.
Falls within daily business, you know, and then there's things that fall above daily business, you know.
Some of these are annual contracts too, that fall within intermediate procurement.
OSH contract. A W S U contract.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about that one too.
It is an official contract.
Um
Good.
So some of these are are annual contracts, but fall within those limits of intermediate procurement where you don't have to go out with an RMP, you can go out and just solicit, I can send an email out to three other
Yeah, the
Internet, internet, where, and and whoever replies back is what you get, and then you can make a decision from that, they don't have to be formal, formal, uh, proposals. Um
Yeah, we shouldn't make it any more arduous than we need to.
But I'm just saying though, that that through that process, if they wanna leave it still with the judge's office to do, that's fine. Or if they want want anything that's a year or more contract to come through the court, however we wanna do that.
You know what I appreciate, even though it's, I don't, I mean, I think it's a reasonable load, is if we can get the copy of the proposed contract.
There is several, I'm I'm assuming you guys are aware that there's several, um, maintenance, annual maintenance contracts, we do page through Tyler, not just exactly like the basics, when they all went to it before I, um, got here, um
Basics.
The basics were, you know, GEO payroll, I think they might have had
Elements of Tyler.
Elements, and then I think cash management was added later, and so I think that's a whole separate, um, maintenance fee that we have. But there is several maintenance fees that we paid.
And those right now roughly are around fifteen thousand dollars for the
Yes, that's the number you kind of got on a similar day.
And the the cloud based portion was twenty four thousand. I need to get with Tyler and say, now, is this, is this twenty four thousand minus thirteen, so we would be looking at eleven thousand to upgrade? Or is it twenty four thousand in and of itself?
I think, um, what hasn't happened consistently in the past is that, and and with getting organized, so we're a few months out, you know, send the old contract we all have an opportunity to say, can we get this changed, this element, not, you know, not
I will, I will go through, and it's gonna be a lot of laser fish searching and and find the existing
But only one is on my search.
Yeah. Yeah.
Hopefully not.
Um, to be able to fill in all these boxes and to have a copy in a file with this sitting on top of it so we can
Yeah, no, this is a good start.
Um, so real quick, like on the on the Century Link, Century Tel Link is Link, that was good. Um, when we switched over to Voice Over IP before I took office, I think it was kinda done, maybe a little bit still remaining when I took office. All the lines from Century Tel, Link, whatever, should have been ported over to launch and then whatever we weren't using should have been canceled.
Is Vonage outlet then?
Uh, no, Vonage is Vonage is is, uh, Voice Over IP, it's it's a contract in and of itself, so I guess actually Vonage would be
Okay, I thought it was
No, that's deep, see, when you don't think about it, then when you start talking about things, you realize you have another contract.
What is it, Vonage?
Vonage.
What is it for?
It's the telephone system, Voice Over IP telephone. So, so I had to bill an account that was a little over a thousand dollars a month. And I'm like, I I, when I very first took office, I called and said, what is this and why, you know, we we just ported over to Voice Over IP? Why do we still have a thousand dollar a month bill? Plus, we do still have a couple of other circuits, I think the Sheriff's Office for the nine one one circuit and stuff, and I think there's a, um, I think there's a line, there's a Century Tel line. I wanna say down in maybe in community corrections because of the system that they work on for the security protocols and stuff that have to go over a regular So, so we do have a couple of
Yeah, we could use Voice.
Yeah, we still have a couple of accounts with them, but this one account, I kept asking them, what is this for? We 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 ported over to Voice Over IP, what are all these lines that you're showing that we still have? And why are we getting charged, this bill should be only a hundred or two hundred dollars a month? So I went around for quite a long time with them, the bill reached, they kept billing us, and the bill reached to ten thousand dollars in in a balance. And I finally said, look, um, I'm not doing anything with this until you can tell me what these lines are.
Was it even used?
Well, that's what I asked them, I asked them, I said, have, is there any activity on these lines that you, that's in this account, this bill? And they went and did some checking on it, however they did that or whatever, and said, no, there's been no activity on any of these lines, so I'm, so I'm, uh, but it it
Gets better?
It gets a little bit, a little bit, so, so I said, okay, if you're telling me, which back in February, I had asked them for some kind of data. They gave me a big old spreadsheet and I'm like, this has all kinds of technical data in it that I have no idea what this means, you're giving it, you know? So, so, um, I finally canceled it, they told me there was no activity, so I canceled it, and it still had a ten thousand dollar balance line. And I said, I'm not paying you ten thousand dollars for services that we didn't get. And so we went through some negotiations, and the last, the last go around negotiation was four thousand dollars and something, and they were gonna write off six thousand of it. So I agreed to get it closed and get out of it. But come to find out afterwards, after I had closed the account, some of those lines were still being used for like our panic buttons.
Oh.
Which we're gonna find a different solution for that through through our IT and Vonage and whatnot, but but, but that's why there was no activity on them, because
Nobody said no.
We'll just have to stay calm and not panic for a while, right?
So, so we are working through a couple of those little widgets like that online, online, the way they work, I mean, they were somewhat still needed, but I think we can find alternatives to it. So just to let you know, on that contract, on that bill, it's not a contract, but that bill, and I
You're good, I just, if if it weren't in government, I would just, hey, what are they gonna do, cut me off?
So
We want you to cut us off.
Yeah, okay, but it was, it was down.
It was ridiculous, they had a technician in the area. They were giving you the low smoke.
Yeah.
You know?
It took us forever, when we finally got out of the Fairgrounds, and it was when we were in between managers, that was one thing that I like drilled down on and Carrie actually helped me accomplish. Because we had lines all over out there and certainly were getting billed for, and they were only used during like rare events, like when we were doing racing, and so they had them on, and used, but we were paying all this and we funding down the room, just your IP phone that had the same number that could take multiple phone calls, the original Century link line in the office could take five voices messages, and then it was full. So Century Tel did not try to win anybody's bill, was.
No, they
So we have a number here, obviously, that need to be added to the list, I haven't started, so I'll add it to it, um
I sent you an email asking to send
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just And then, um, and then, you know, as I gather, as I can find contracts, as I can get dates, as I can find dollar amounts, whatever, I'll fill all that in. And then we can come back and
Yeah, the only other two that, you know, these are ones that we currently don't have out for contract, that I did want to bring up as a potential contract in the future especially as I look at this building, our lack of space, uh, the training required for both of these, and the time that our staff currently takes that could be contracted and outsourced outside of here as humans or human resources and payroll. I talked to a lot of other entities, a lot of people in this county do contract those out so that they don't have to house them in-house which our space issue is a real issue, but also the fact that they have multiple people and we have no ability to create cross-training for either of those where if you're contracted out, you have multiple staff available, and so it doesn't just put us in the precarious position we currently are with both of those, and I think that any others that people can look at that could be potentially outsourced because of our lack of ability to cross-train you know, I'd be willing to look at any others that people, uh, you know, think of that we could contract out to other entities because it is so hard to create cross-training amongst some of our essential services that we're currently struggling with having any sort of, in any form of backup for beyond all the state regulations that are always changing.
When I was in that transition period for School District Three where they still had the business manager doing all that and then they ended up contracting with a very experienced intermountain ESD that had a a big service, uh, you know, staff for things. I mean, it was like instantaneous, everything was getting done promptly, ninety eight percent correct the first time not so many people having to come in, you know, this isn't wrong, this was wrong, my paycheck, this, that, I mean, it would just it just was the right way to go at that time.
The payroll side of it, I could see, you know, cloud-based, off-site companies figuring the, figuring the tax withholdings and and all that kind of stuff, I could, I could see that one. I I could, I could see that one, the HR one, I'm I'm a little concerned about, they, whoever we contracted with, because of the size of our organization we're gonna have to have some kind of a really good, or they're gonna have to have some kind of a really good customer service line that that people can call. And, and, um, you know, as HR issues come up.
You did do a transfer from twenty five to the TB line this morning, didn't you?
Yeah, I copied it over, yeah.
Well, the other benefit that other people mentioned to me is because they don't have someone here in the community dealing with the human resources deals it made their staff, uh, even more comfortable with dealing with HR sharing things, uh, because it wasn't somebody that they then ran into the grocery store later also. You know, and there was that side of it that was an additional benefit within their own entities that they found for their employees, and so I think that yes, whatever, uh, entity you were to go with, they would have to have devoted staff that would be available. But, uh, it's done all the time, I mean, and that's
That's what I'm concerned about, for our staff.
I I've heard only positive things about their interactions with the folks that they contract with, and that it's it's been a very good service for them to engage in on both of those, and and there's entities out there like crazy that are willing to do it and that allow staff to do it. Um, so that's, that's what I would like to look at as as a county and say that the more entities I talk to, very, very few of them have them sitting on site anymore.
But, I mean, it's, everything worth looking at, absolutely, I'm not gonna say, I'm not gonna be opposed to it. Um, anything else as far as this, I've got some homework to do for next session, um, maybe we'll have um, executive assistant in place by then.
Yeah, you know, something that they could kind of tackle and own and
She should start next
Wednesdays, that
Yeah, there's twenty four that falls on her. Um, the only, so the only next topic, I guess, then, if we're, if we are done, is the next work session, um.
So I would propose we'd obviously do it after she would have a little wee time to, uh, get settled in and be ready to, you know, come back with some information on this thing we're going to assignment.
So how how do you feel, how you, both of you feel about scheduling our work sessions for court days, county court days?
I would prefer only cuz I'm finding it, you know?
It makes a full day, we have, I mean, for the most, we have a few that run past lunch, but for the most part, here lately, they've been before lunch. I had one last week that did.
And there'll occasionally be one where you can't, you know, cuz there'll be some kind of
But if we do a work session from, and keep them at an hour or two, I don't think we need to
Well, no, I think you become less productive after an hour.
Yeah, so from two to three
Well, punch you tight.
From from, on county court days, from two to three, two thirty to three thirty, something like that, give us enough time in case we do run over a little bit in county court.
I gotta leave for the bus by three thirty, so
Two to three?
Yeah, um, and if it turns out, and I, when when there was a need for an evening one line, but I know that, uh, I've been getting people saying, yeah, so we watched, you know, I watched whatever your recordings, even, we're becoming famous for other counties watching our recordings when it comes to, uh, some of the stuff that SB
And this is, you know, something that once, once we get our administrative assistant on, I'll maybe dive into further, but, um, things like this, um, things like this, uh, MOUs, uh, even things like the Lord, uh, deals, if we were to make them a Google-based system where we store them, I could go in and update it at any moment and cancel it.
But you, you can, with with VPN, with the VPN, you can get access to your documents here at the county on the server.
You you can, but we have to have them in a place where we have shared access, and so we need to figure out a format for shared access because then
There's a shared documents, uh, directory on the, on the server right now.
I don't have access to it, do I?
Well, you should have, it may not be, your computer may not be mapped for it, but it's just a matter of mapping it, then you could
If when we do that, teach me, and I'll use it.
They're pretty simple to use, but they creep, they they cut out.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna push back on that one, I don't like Google Docs.
Oh, Google Docs are great, but Microsoft, I came up with a similar version where you can share it. Google Docs.
I'll do whatever, when it's established, I hear what you're saying on the efficiency of that.
It could really make some of this way more efficient, cuz you don't always have to give like this kind of stuff, you wouldn't have to give us editing power but just be able to look at it, you can set whether the person, you know, can edit or not.
Right.
And so like on some of our other stuff, you could set it to edit with all our work stuff, these ones can just be viewable, so we can be like, oh, that's coming up make sure that it, you know, it gets looked at.
More to come.
But we have the, we have the capability for you to be able to edit anything that's on the, on the server here from home through the VPN.
Yeah, and I I use my VPN when I have documents from home, but, um, not these type of documents that can be shared amongst our body and our administrative assistant.
So if it's in a file, if it's in a folder that's in the, that's on the shared drive, we can all get access to it.
Right.
We all have access to it.
So we need to load that shared drive.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, you may not be, you may not have that drive mapped in your computer, um, and
So that could be something that we're
So, yes, um, and actually, I will, I will look at it and make sure, even if we create a county court folder with more direct folder with other folders inside of it or whatever, and make sure that the three, four, three of us, four of us it's not public information, but it's those that are working on it within
Well, it's mostly so we can keep track of it, not
Yeah, so I'll, I'll have IT, I'll have IT make sure that everybody's computers are mapped for it, they may have to see your computer to do it when you're available, but So how about March twentieth, it's a month?
For what?
For a work session.
On what topic?
Uh, well, this one or whatever, we've got other ones coming up too, are we gonna try and transition all those to a, to a court day?
If possible, I mean, occasionally it won't be possible, but I I would prefer that cuz I, we all have very different, you know, meeting
Days should be fine.
So fourteen, I'm sorry, two o'clock. I prefer.
Okay, so then, at least for now, then, the next, the next work session dealing with contracts, um, will be March twentieth at two PM. It it it'll make, makes it a lot easier for the scheduling and reserving the room and everything. All right, so we shall, our work session shall stand adjourned now.